City Council Meeting of October 21, 2025 to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silence. The invocation be led by Councilman Solar and the pledge by Councilman Nessar.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege and freedom we have of being able to gather together this evening to discuss city business. We ask that you give the staff and council wisdom and clarity in the decision-making. Keep us mindful that we serve the residents of the city. We ask you to watch over the men and women who serve in our military over the world. Keep them safe in these troubling and turbulent times. We also ask for your blessing on first responders, including police, fire, and EMS personnel, along with our park rangers. Please keep these brave men and women safe in their duties to protect and care for the residents of our city. Thank you for the honor and privilege we have to serve the residents of our great city. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Present.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Solar?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. As a reminder, all items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Solar?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, and I have words and proclamations. I have two here. First one, Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Whereas citizens of Apache Junction rely on the city to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital city services, which are fire, police, emergency medical response to ensure safe communities, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, recreation programs, libraries, health and wellness programs, street maintenance, and whereas it's important for Apache Junction to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community, and whereas through participation and cooperation with our community leaders, staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the city can remain exceptional elements to quality of life. Now therefore I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim the week of October 19 through 25 as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Rob.
Excited to have Rob come up and represent the city here. Rob, let's get a photo. Thank you, Rob.
All right. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 25, 2025, excuse me. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease, and whereas breast cancer remains one of the most common cancers affecting women worldwide, with over 2 million new cases diagnosed each year and countless families impacted by this emotional and physical toll, and whereas advances in early detection, treatment, and research have led to a significant decline in mortality rates, yet continued awareness, education, and support are essential to further reduce the burden of this disease. And whereas we encourage all residents to participate in educational events, screening, fundraising initiatives, and community programs that promote breast cancer health and support ongoing research, and whereas this October, display pink ribbons or wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those currently battling the disease, and friends and families of diagnosed patients, and applaud the efforts of the medical professions working to find a cure. Now therefore I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And Brenda Hamilton and Elizabeth Cliff? All come down there.
Want to get you in the best light.
Thank you so much for inviting us to participate in the proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Brenda and I are survivors. I call myself a thriver, as I have been battling metastatic breast cancer for several years, and as the mayor has says, we've come a long way with advancements and medications to extend people's lives like me. Impact One is a nonprofit that serves women in Arizona, and we've done a lot of work with the City of Apache Junction through the rodeo days and different organizations helping women in the now. And what we're able to do is find out where women are in their journey and provide them with vital essentials that are often not covered by insurance. And so it could be where a woman is in treatment and her insurance might have turned her down for a wig or any kind of medical supplies that they need after a mastectomy. And so we are able to provide those items to any woman in Arizona that calls and requests those products, and we're sending them to their home free of charge. The second program that we offer is prevention, where we're able to work with organizations and provide free mobile 3D mammograms to women who are uninsured. This is a vital essential for women in Arizona because a lot of times, they've never had a baseline mammogram. And being able to have a baseline mammogram, women are able to follow up with that yearly, and they realize the importance of that, and providing them education and resources to them if they are diagnosed with something that is considered breast cancer. I'd like to turn this time over to Brenda, who's been a huge part of our program and has helped women all over Arizona, hundreds of women, providing them with vital resources. So I'll have her speak. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, thank you very much for this honor and opportunity to be a part of this Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the proclamation that you have established. We greatly appreciate being recognized, and again, as Elizabeth stated, we are here with the rodeo every year, and we support them. We were just up there this past Saturday at their event. So we are a grassroots organization that is deeply embedded into the community and trying to make a difference in the lives of women throughout the state. So thank you again very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regional intergovernment meeting, updates from council. You want to start it?
Do you want to?
Go ahead.
I'll do a portion.
Okay.
So, last week, Councilman Cross, the mayor and myself, attended the transportation summit. One of the bigger takeaways I'm getting from this is that they had a menu item, I guess you could say, called the Listening Tour, and the mayor set up for Councilman Cross and myself to sit down with ADOT directly, and we laid out all of the needs and the necessities of our roads here in the East Valley. So much so, made such an argument, that we have the promise, they are going to set up like a neighborhood community meeting, including neighboring cities like Queen Creek or Florence or Santan, because they'll all be affected by the areas that we feel need to be addressed. So that was a good thing, I think, and so this should be transpiring, I would say, within the next few months.
Also included Superior, because of their problems they have when we have activities out here on 60. Yes.
To piggyback on that, on the bad side of the meeting or the whole summit, is the fact that we're $6.1 billion, with a B, dollars, kind of in the hole for projected road maintenance and road growth. And even if we raised the gasoline tax on vehicles by 40 cents, the most we get out of that is $1 billion or $1.2 billion. So there's a lot of work to be done on a statewide level to try and come up with funding to keep our roads safe, to build new roads, to resurface the roads we have. It's going to take a lot of work and a lot of effort by our state legislators, all the way down to even our city, but you know, our city does really well with its roads. But on a statewide level, there's some hurting going on, so hope they can figure it out.
Who else?
Did you want to cover the shovels today's?
Yeah. Okay, that's the next one. We, Councilman Cross and myself, attended a groundbreaking out at the Mesa Gateway Airport, and one of the things, the company that's coming in is, I drew a blank, flight safety. It is a, I want to say, an individual or a company that teaches and or reteaches and does, you know, refreshment activities to your pilots and copilots, you know, all aircraft. They say that really and truthfully, the studies have included that the aspects of going through a retraining period of time, that decreases incidence for, you know, the involved activities that are detrimental in aircraft by over 70%. So they're a nationwide company that has selected a location down near the airport to put in a huge training program together and training facilities, and it's our ability to break ground on it, so we went out there to shovel a little bit of dirt. Okay. City managers' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. Tonight, I'd like to kick off my report by inviting the Executive Director of Maricopa Association of Governments, Ed Zirker, to come up. It's his last month before he changes his job, and maybe he'll tell us a little bit about that. I know that under the mayor's invitation, we asked them to come, and they love talking about transportation, so the time is timely, actually.
Ed? Thank you. Thank you, Bryant and Mayor Wilson, members of the council. Happy to be here with you today. I just want to check, is this, do I advance it here?
It can advance it, yes.
The arrow's there. Okay, perfect. So Ed Zirker, I'm the Executive Director of Maricopa Association of Governments, although in about three weeks, I'm going to be moving to the City of Phoenix to be the city manager there upon the retirement of their existing city manager, but for the next three or four weeks, I'm here with this, and it's been a real pleasure to work with MAG and with Mayor Wilson and the city manager, Mr. Powell, as well. So just to talk a little bit here about a project really important, I know, to Penal County and to Apache Junction and your neighboring cities, is the Superstition Vista's Multimodal Study. And this is really a great example of what MAG can provide to the region. Maricopa Association of Governments, we are the metropolitan planning organization. We are established by the federal government to plan for transportation dollars to be spent in the region. That, and we also work on issues such as human services and air quality, but primarily transportation is our core mission. This is the map of our region. It's a very large region. By land area, MAG would be larger than the state of New Jersey. By population of about 5 million people, we'd be the 25th largest state in the United States. So it's a vast region, made up of 27 cities and towns, including Apache Junction, two counties, Maricopa and Penal, and three native nations. They comprise the membership of MAG. MAG makes decisions in a group called the Regional Council. Mayor Wilson represents you there. Mayor Wilson sits on that board with the same voting powers as the mayor of Phoenix and all the other mayors and county supervisors there. He represents you well. Mr. Powell represents you as a representative of the management committee, and I really want to thank Mayor Wilson for your faithful attendance, your participation, your leadership. You've been a strong voice for the things we've been working at to accomplish here. The mayor stood firm together for Prop 479 in Maricopa County to pass, and I've also been strong advocates for transportation in Penal County. So MAG is here to serve you in the area of transportation planning, and that's what brings us here this evening. See the numbers? You see Apache Junction is alphabetically the first member of the MAG board listed there, and you can see the numbers of MAG. But tonight, we want to spend a little bit of time to talk to you about superstition vistas. I'm going to introduce our senior planner, Hannah Quincy. She's one of our finest, and she's been working diligently on planning the superstition vistas area, which is a framework study that will give you tools you need as a council to make decisions about responsible growth, how to manage the transportation, the street network, as you mentioned, council member, in this region that is so important to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Hannah to walk you through the results of this, the study that she has led in the area. Again, thank you for your participation, for being part of the public involvement in this. Hannah?
Thank you, Ed. Well, good evening, Mayor Wilson, council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to provide an update on the superstition vistas multimodal transportation planning study. In this presentation, I will highlight the study's progress, illustrating the area growth, and how we can mitigate existing transportation constraints with a vision for the future transportation network in this fast-growing subregion. The superstition vistas study area shown on the screen here roughly spans about 287 square miles within the city of Apache Junction, the town of Florence, city of Mesa, the town of Queen Creek, and Maricopa and Penal Counties, as well as Maricopa, sorry, Maricopa and Penal Counties with lands managed by Arizona State Lands, and it sits adjacent to the Gila River Indian Community. I also want to highlight that the study area includes the newly incorporated town of Santan MAG conducted this study at the request and for the benefit of our member agencies to help you plan for the future transportation needs in your city and in this fast-growing subregion. The study provides a data-driven framework for understanding what the future near-term and long-range transportation network will need to look like to accommodate projected traffic volumes from population and employment growth. And throughout this study, we've taken direction from the study area's agencies and through town and city staff, through a technical advisory group, and sought input from various stakeholders and from the public. To illustrate the growth within the superstition vistas study area, I'm going to take you through a series of current and forecasted socioeconomic condition snapshots, with the darker colors representing higher densities of population and employment, which today are concentrated in the western portions of the study area. Shown on your screen is existing population. MAG forecasts that population will grow 70% in this study area over the next 25 years. And by 2030, you will see that this population, the orange colors darken, and that population continues to densify, and by 2050, the population continues to densify and spread to the east portions of that study area. Now shown on your screen is employment density for the existing year. And then by 2030, that purple color starts to darken and spread throughout the study area, signaling that there is growing and densifying employment, especially along key corridors and planned transportation investments. By 2050, MAG projects that employment will grow 152%. Traffic volumes will also grow between now and 2030. The darker and the redder lines shown here on the screen are the corridors with the highest traffic volumes. By 2030, these traffic volumes continue to grow, and by 2050, those key corridors are experiencing major mobility constraints, including traffic congestion, limited capacity of existing roadways, as well as gaps in the roadway network. So our study team developed recommended multimodal transportation networks for 2030 and 2050 horizons with input from our member agencies, including your staff. The individual projects included in these recommended networks are sourced from a combination of MAG's regional investment plan, or local capital improvement programs and adopted plans, and there are newly recommended projects that are identified through the study's network stress testing scenarios. The purpose of these recommended networks is not to prescribe specific projects to you, but to serve as a planning tool, a framework that your city can use to identify priorities, to guide development decisions, and to coordinate future transportation investments. The 2030 and 2050 roadway networks are the study's cornerstone recommendations and include 136 new or widened roadway projects and 34 operational intersection improvements. The map's orange lines represent roadway widening, and the green lines are new roadway construction projects. Intersection enhancements are shown on the map as little blue dots. These were also identified to improve traffic flow and to mitigate localized congestion. Shown here, this 2030 network addresses current development pressures by expanding existing arterial roadway capacities and closing key connectivity gaps in the grid network, especially where growth is most concentrated. Many of these projects address congestion hotspots along corridors like Hunt Highway, Ironwood Drive, Ellsworth Road, and Jermaine Road, and these are corridors that are already operating near capacity. To support future development, especially east of the Central Arizona Project Canal, the 2050 network adds several new east-west and north-south roadway corridors to complete the grid network and to create new access points along the US 60. The network closes key roadway gaps, as shown on your screen, completing missing segments along Meridian Road, as well as extending Southern Avenue to improve that east-west connectivity here in Apache Junction. The 2050 network also includes new arterial connections that would provide direct access to the future site of the Solar King Project. The recommended networks also include a total of 12 distinct freeway projects, as shown on your screen, to enhance mobility across the region and to support freight travel, including critical improvements to the state Route 24 and to the future north-south corridor. By 2030, for example, the state Route 24 is planned to be converted to a full freeway with grade-separated interchanges to alleviate the pressures on surrounding arterials. The recommended networks also include 199 non-motorized projects. The dotted lines shown on your screen show new multi-use paths, bike lanes, safer crossings, and trail connections for 2030 on-street, 2030 off-street, and 2050 off-street. The recommendations also include potential long-range fixed route transit extensions, including the extensions of the Route 108 in Mesa and the Routes 156 and 184 into Queen Creek. The recommendations also include preferred freight corridors, shown as the dashlines here, that support continued industrial growth, including the Paycoast Industrial Rail Access and Train Extension, known as the Pirate Spur, and connections to the Union Pacific Main Line. Strategic planning for freight is essential as developments expand, like the LG Energy Facility circled on the map here, and the Elliott Road Tech Corridor circled there. So over the summer, the study team reached consensus on these recommended networks in coordination with our technical advisory group and in coordination with your city staff, and held public and stakeholder review of these preliminary recommendations. The team is currently finalizing these recommended networks, and we're developing a final report, which also includes a funding and implementation plan. We anticipate bringing the final report to MAG policy committees for acceptance in January 2026, and when complete, the study will serve as a technical and strategic resource for our member agencies, a tool that you can reference to guide local planning, development review, and future transportation investments. I also wanted to mention that, as requested by Apache Junction, MAG will be kicking off a US 60 corridor study from Ironwood Road to Superstition Mountain Drive. We'll be meeting, MAG will be meeting with city staff next week to talk about the project scope, to understand what issues Apache Junction is experiencing along this corridor, to help shape up how we'll scope this project and what the focus areas will be, and it's planned at this time that we would advertise that project in January of '26. In closing, I just want to again emphasize that superstition vistas is one of Arizona's fastest-growing subregion. Our study provides a forward-looking, data-informed framework to keep residents moving and to help our member agencies respond to growth with coordinated multimodal transportation solutions. We appreciate your city's continued guidance as we continue to move forward toward a final plan that reflects both regional priorities and local needs. So thank you, Mayor Wilson, council members. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
Regarding the US 60 to Superstition Mountain Road, you know, once again, we had another tragic incident where the road got closed down for hours, and right now, the only go-around is all the way down to what, Arizona Farms Road, and then back through Santan Valley. We really, really need to have some kind of a better bypass that's more reasonable, and I think it should be prioritized, because our neighbors, Gold Canyon, at least deserve a better way to get out.
Well, I have a question, but it's actually for Bryant, so are you going to ask staff questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
During your presentation, you mentioned Solar King Project.
Mayor Wilson and council members, thank you for the question. Yeah, so in a recent presentation to our Regional Council or Transportation Policy Committee, we gave an update on this study at MAG, and the question came up about how these networks, these recommended networks, could potentially serve the site of the potential solar site, Silver King, I believe is what it's called. And, you know, it's still... And, you know, it's still, to my understanding, in the planning phases and there's sort of public outreach going on and whatnot. But I wanted to make the connection of if this development does come to fruition in the next five, 10 years, whenever, how would these networks, these roadway arterial networks potentially serve that site? So I did include that slide just to give you a visual of where that solar site would be located in the context of the study area and within the context of the network of recommended roadway improvements.
Do you also have an idea if that project doesn't go through?
The recommended networks would be the same regardless if that development came to fruition.
It would be the same situation. That's 9,000 acres, isn't it?
It is, I believe so, but in terms of the population and employment growth generated from that type of facility, it doesn't affect our population and employment projections within that area to any certain degree that would affect the traffic volumes that we would expect in 2050.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
On the map that showed the Silver King Project, you kind of have the 24 hooking off and going to the northwest of that footprint, where I think a lot of us envisioned the 24 connecting up right there at Florence Junction. And so is there a plan to maybe realign that if the Silver King Project doesn't go through?
Mayor Wilson and council members, at this time, that segment of the 24, there hasn't been any planning done for that segment there. The current alignment for the 24 would basically is done to the north-south corridor that was included in the Tier 2 EIS, or the Tier 1 EIS, excuse me, that ADOT conducted. But beyond that, we, there hasn't been planning for the alignment beyond the north-south corridor. However, included in the 2050 network, you will see the extension that reaches the US-60. This was an alignment that we came to consensus on with input from Apache Junction staff.
Hopefully, we can change that.
Well, we'll definitely have opportunity to work with Pinal County as we work through the process as the extension goes east as a planning effort on the 24.
True. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you. Thank you. And we'll get to see you one more time in our meeting. And best to move on.
One more question, maybe from...
Yeah. Brian?
Yeah.
My question is this: With MAG presenting this or supplying us with this information of what they potentially see as the future growth, population growth, between now and 2050, in the next 25 years, and the existing and future growth, employment, are we actively looking at everything south of the 60 in this area of how we are zoned, how it was when we annexed it, to see if what they are saying is potentially where employment is going to be? It wouldn't do us any good if it's not zoned for commercial. And we might have to make some changes or, you know, tweak it somehow. So are we, have we, or will we be looking at, like, their maps to see how it's zoned and how they work together?
We really have a quick answer to that is yes. So the ability to perform this analysis west of the canal in the annexed area of the city is starting to formulate, and it helps derive the ability to do this planning. Where it gets a little bit tougher is east of there, where we haven't annexed yet, and where we'll work with the landowner, the state land department, to figure that out. But the zoning was actually adopted through the process five years ago when you annexed. And so that did help us establish, like, the framework, the base work that they could, that MAG could use to develop that.
Okay.
So yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, Eli.
Your Honor, if I could just kick off a couple more items that happened. We had a really busy week this last week, and Matt, we have a couple photos I don't know if everyone's aware of, but we have the Pentecost International Worship Center in our city. It's a, in essence, a very...
Chipmunks jeans?
Is that you, Peggy?
Mayor Wilson. Peggy actually got him to go down. So four of our council members were able to be with our police department in the Faith in Blue event. Very, very neat event, very community-oriented. Our second annual, and it was just so well-attended. And we went to the church, council member Heck there doing the plunge on the dunk tank. Maybe go the next one there. Of course, Peg having fun with the mayor. He looked a little cold there, Councilmember Solar, getting ready to go in.
He's praying.
Maybe that was after, he'd already got wet. And then, of course, Councilmember Johnson. And we miss you tonight, Bambi, and of course, thinking of you. But just wanted to share what a great event that is and plan on doing it next year and invite more and more folks from the community to come in on that Sunday afternoon.
I would like to recommend, if you're ever going to do that, wear water shoes so you don't fall getting out of the tank.
We might ask for other folks to do the dunk tank next year.
I will not miss it.
Okay.
What about you, Brian?
I can do it next year. I will do it.
I will hold it.
I would just prefer everyone to be safe. Couple weeks, well, actually, just two weekends ago, we hit some rain that we hadn't had in a couple of years. And folks sometimes wonder why we do what we do in the development community. And we had this massive drainage project that's over there near, it's called The Verge. And people probably say, oh, that's a big drainage. You'll never, why would you ever have it that big? And this is why. So Matt, if you'll hit play, we have a few seconds here of this running, just about 10 days ago now.
Did what it was designed to do?
Yeah, engineer did, yeah, it's designed what it do, move it along that area. Some of the drainage that we've had, it's been two years, some of the improvements at Superstition Basin, and this drainage area has really helped us maintain some of, where our Public Works Department had a big job to do, but it wasn't as bad as it could have been had we not had some of these improvements put in. In addition, we made the news. We had a situation where we had a swift water rescue, and we'll go ahead and hit play on this. Officer Slawinski, or I should say Sergeant Slawinski and Officer Ballinger did a wonderful job in helping one of our citizens who are stranded here.
Around 8:00 p.m. Monday...
I didn't see the... I don't know an emergency, do we need police or medic?
Around 8:00 p.m. Monday...
I didn't see the water coming in 10 minutes ago. It's coming up to the windshield.
A call for help from a driver stuck in fast-moving water.
He was actually driving through, and while the water hit his car, and it pushed him about five feet off the side of the road.
Jim Murray watched as the rescue unfolded.
I would say 25, 30 mile an hour, maybe. It was moving. If he would have went over, he would have been gone.
Hold me. I got you, Sergeant. Where's the back of your vest?
Two officers answering that call.
If we have to risk ourselves, then we have to risk ourselves.
One of them, Sergeant Thomas Slawinski.
That was my goal, to save him and get him out of that situation.
Saying they were going to do whatever they could to help.
The one street that I went down was actually washed out. I actually jumped two fences into people's yards to get over another flooded area, and then I ran probably about a good mile and a half, two miles, to get to the guy.
I got you, Sergeant.
Once there.
Both myself and the other officer, Officer Ballinger. We gave commands to the male subject, hey, relax, we're here for you, just focus on us.
I don't know where the drop-off's at.
Both officers inched towards the car.
There's a ledge, and that ledge is probably a good six-foot, eight-foot drop.
Which was held only by a rock.
Okay, there's a rock, there's a rock right where my foot is.
There was a lot of stuff that we didn't know about underwater, and when we were walking through it, yeah, we were hitting rocks and everything like that, too.
Hey, now, listen to me, listen to me. You're going to go into deep water, and it's going to be quickly moving, okay?
A makeshift rope was made, which eventually was caught by the driver, who crawled out the window.
I'm going to hold on to you, but I need you to hold on to me, okay? We're going to get through this together, all right? All right?
I'll be honest with you, it's a little nerve-wracking. But the one thing for me was, is that having that understanding of you can only control what's in front of you, and what was in front of me was him. That's my control. So I want to make sure that he's taken care of first.
Don't let go of the rope!
Once pulled to safety.
Hold that tight! I got you, Sergeant.
Relief felt by all.
It's our job, this is what we do. I'm going to say this, I'm no hero. I'm just a patrol sergeant, and I just wanted to help out as much as possible, and that's what we did.
You all right?
Thank you, man. Thank you, Sergeant Slawinski, and a huge shout-out. Everyday heroes, just doing their job, you know? And it's the Cities and Towns Week, and we, as a staff, really appreciate you honoring the cities, the staff who are out there doing a great work. In addition, two weeks ago, Emile Schmidt, city engineer, presented the update to Week's Wash. That's why this wash is, it puts public safety in a tough spot. In this case, even if a fire hadn't been there. But I want to share with you a video that was shared 18,000 times, or viewed 18,000 times with our Public Works Department after the aftermath of what this does. And so this investment that's been worked on for years and is continuing, our hopes to get Week's Wash and detain can help so many of these issues. Matt, let's watch about a minute of this one.
So when it rains a lot in Apache Junction, we have multiple washes that fill with lots of water. And while it fills with lots of water, there's water that runs on top of the road. It can be really dangerous for residents to drive across when there's a lot of water on top. And so if you see situations like this, you should not be driving across the road. You should find another way. We first work on arterial roads, so the major roads, and then after we clear up those arterial roads, then we start with the more neighborhood roads and start working on those and clearing those up. So the Week's Wash project will allow for us to slow down the water as it comes through Week's Wash. And so right now, the water's rushing very quickly, and so the wash overflows and the roads overflow. But the Week's Wash project will stop the water towards the top. And once it stops the water towards the top and slows it down, it'll be a controlled release as it goes through the wash, which will keep it a lot safer for residents. Yeah, our Public Works crew was out a lot this weekend, so they were out yesterday on Sunday for about 10 hours, working on closing the roads and making sure that the roads that had a lot of water flowing, that those roads were closed and that citizens were safe. And then they worked a lot today to start clearing the roads and reopening the roads. So once the debris has been cleared, and the sediment and the sands have been pushed off to the side of the road, then we clear the road and open it so that residents can drive through again.
So a huge shout-out to our Public Works staff that just went right at it that first weekend, and those roads are going to be worked on, it's going to take a couple of weeks. We put those in a priority, and then we work to get those cleared. And so, Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight. We will continue to work on Week's Wash. We thank you for your support on that. I'd like to turn the time over to Rob to talk about one big event coming up in the community.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rob Whistler, Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. One current event to let everyone know about, and that is on Saturday from 4:00 to 8:00, the Halloween Festival at Superstition Shadows Park. And it is free this year, no registration, costume contests, pumpkin carving contests, trunk-or-treat, and so much more. We welcome our community out this year. Should be a great event. And that concludes my report.
Turn it back to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public hearings. Presentation, discussion, and public hearings, consideration, and application for a new Series 12 liquor, restaurant liquor license for Mickey D's Cafe. Evy.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, we have a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license that has been requested by Mickey D's, located at 1408 West Apache Trail. The liquor license received the application on the 19th, and it was forwarded to the City Clerk's Office that same day. We did a posting of the public hearing for tonight's date, and that was posted for over 20 days, meeting the state law requirements. Correspondence was received from our four entities, the Apache Junction Police Department, Building and Safety Division, Planning and Zoning Department, as well as the Superstition Fire and Medical District. And all four entities find compliance with the inspection requirements, and they recommend approval. This evening, it is your time to make the decision if you would like to recommend this to the Arizona State Liquor License and Control on this application. And we did try to get in touch with the applicant, but they are not here this evening, so...
Yes, they are.
No, they're here.
They're here.
I'm so sorry. Okay. My apologies.
Any discussion among council?
No.
Yes. Yes.
Can we get the owner? Just have one quick question.
Hi, my name is Becky. I'm the manager at Mickey D's. Rem could not be here tonight. He had surgery yesterday, so I'm here representing him for tonight's events.
Thank you, Becky. So I understand this will be just offering alcoholic beverages for breakfast and lunch, right?
Yes, sir, 6 to 1.
Right. So just a quick question, this Barrio area. Now, I know it's outdoors, and I think in the past it's been used for people to be able to sit out there, is that correct?
Not anymore, sir. It hasn't been for about five years.
So not be used at all for any overflow or anything?
No.
Okay. So you're not looking for that as part of the premises to be used for serving alcohol?
No, sir. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit with one-minute warning you'll hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone want to speak on this? And I see no movement. So I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Mickey D's Cafe, located at 1408 West Apache Trail, Apache Junction, Arizona, be recommended to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control for approval.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Presentation, discussion, and public hearing for consideration of ordinance number 1568. Rob.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Rob Whistler, Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. Two weeks, on September 16th, at the September 16th meeting, we came to discuss the Municipal Property Corporation. The Municipal Property Corporation was, once again, it was formed in the early 1990s to allow the city to sell municipal bonds. And it did so for a number of years for a number of projects, namely the police station. In 1997, federal law changed such that the Municipal Property Corporation was no longer necessary for the city to go and do municipal bonds. Since that time, for roughly the last 30 years, the Municipal Property Corporation has had no business other than electing officers and approving the last meeting's minutes. At the September 16th meeting, council directed staff to wind down the MPC and return with an ordinance to remove it from the city code. Staff has proceeded to do that, and tonight, the ordinance comes before you. Tonight, I'm here, as well as Zach Sakis, our bond counsel, for any questions or if you want to go back over the presentation that you saw on the 16th.
Okay. Do I have any discussion from the council? Nope. So I'll now open the hearing to public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit with one-minute warning you'll hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this? See no movement. I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1568 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for reading.
Mayor, I move that ordinance...
What, what?
She has to read it first.
Oh, you can always do that. He always does that.
Ordinance number 1568. Ordinance number 1568. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 2, Mayor, Council, and Appointed Boards and Commissions, Article 2-21, Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Municipal Property Corporation, Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board, by repealing 2-21-2, Municipal Property Corporation in its entirety, authorizing staff to take all Municipal Property Corporation administrative dissolution steps, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1568, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for ordinance number 1568.
Okay. New, onto new business. Presentation, discussion, and consideration of resolution number 25-29. Matt.
Mayor and council members, we'll invite Zach Sekus up to handle this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Zach Sekus. I'm a bond attorney at Greenberg Trowrig. Tonight in front of you is in connection with Superstition Vista's CFD Number 2. At the time we formed, or, at the time Apache Junction formed the district, we entered into what we call, sort of, the rules of the road, a community facilities, district development agreement. Parties to that agreement included the district, the city, and the developer entities, and those consisted of, at the time, two affiliated entities of Brookfield Residential. One that's the, in charge of the day-to-day development, and one that provided financial strength in the event the city or the district needed additional cash contributions. At this time, Brookfield, because it has restructured its, its corporate structure, has asked to substitute that financial, that guarantor or indemnitor entity, and substitute in two new entities. The city, as a party to the CFD Development Agreement, would need to approve the Second Amendment to the CFD Development Agreement to authorize this action. City staff and district staff have reviewed the financial strength of the proposed entities being swapped in. While there's always risk related to development, in this case, there's no city property taxes that would in any way be, you know, implicated or have to go to pay for district expenses. And then likewise, we anticipate this, this leaves the district in potentially a stronger position because it has now two strong financial entities providing indemnification to the city and the district as to, before there was only one. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions? No questions? This, we have to have a motion for this one, right? Okay. I have a motion for this.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that resolution number 25-29, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a Second Amendment to amended and restated district development, financing, participation, waiver, and intergovernmental agreement for Superstition Vista's Community Facilities District Number 2, and authorizing other actions in furtherance of this resolution, whether heretofore or hereafter, taken, be approved.
Second. Do I have a second?
I said second.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for resolution number 25-29.
Consideration of applicants for annual appointments and reappointments for the boards and commissions. Before we begin, I'd like to thank each and every one of the people that applied in your willingness to serve our city and its residents. This is a great way to influence how our city development and growth occur, and ensure the vision is for the future. Evy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to recap, once again, we did receive 26 applications in total for boards and commissions recruitment this year, which was, I think, a record. We're super thrilled with that many. You did have the opportunity to interview 15 of those applicants last night. Just a reminder that six of the applicants are incumbents, and I don't have anything else for you unless you have any questions for me before we begin.
Any questions?
Yeah, I did have one. The planning and zoning, it's, right now, expiring terms two, vacancy one, so that's three positions.
That is correct.
And then is there a fourth?
No.
Okay.
This is three total.
Okay.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Yep.
In the past, Evy, we've, um, have to, uh, we also had to announce when this term were, would be expiring?
It is listed in the motions.
Okay.
And when we do the motion, I can certainly repeat that.
Thank you.
Okay. Another question. Have you just confirmed on the planning and zoning, that one vacant position is gonna be, we'd be appointing someone for, to fill out, to complete the balance of the current term, and then for the next three-year term?
So there are two, uh, two seats for a full three-year term, and then the one, um, the one seat is for a one-year term, that's filling a vacancy of a resignation, resignation of a, of a current member.
Oh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna vote in the person for the next...
This will be for a one-year term.
Okay.
To complete that term that was resigned from. Okay.
Okay. Well, let's go to the motion sheets. I'll do, uh, Board of Adjustment. Do I have a motion for someone for Board of Adjustment?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Lamont Kepler be appointed to the Board of Adjustments for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes for Lamont Clement to be appointed to the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, for a second position?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate John Gordon to the, for position on the Board of Adjustment for the term to expire October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes for John Gordon to be appointed to the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Now for the third vacant, third position. Do I have a nomination?
I do, I do have somebody.
Okay.
Um, Your Honor, I nominate Catherine Meek. For the, for the, for the, for the term to expire October 31st, 2028.
I'll second that.
Twenty-seven? Oh, twenty-seven?
I would like to make a correction, that this is a term that expires in 2027.
Sorry, okay.
Okay. For the record.
Second.
I'm sorry, was it Vice Mayor that made the motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Or made the second.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll, roll call, please.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Welcome aboard. Yes.
Motion passes for Catherine Meek to be appointed to the Board of Adjustments for a term to expire on October 31st, 2027.
Okay. Construction Board of Appeals.
Excuse me, Your Honor, can I make one announcement for the Construction Board of Appeals? So in, um, the motions, the second motion is referencing a general contractor. We actually have that position filled. This is for a non-general contractor. So if in the motion, you can state that it's for the non-general.
Are any of these people on here, general contractors, that you know off the top of your head?
I do not know that.
Because I don't remember.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Can I get a motion for an individual for Construction Board of Appeals? First one.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate John Gordon to the position of Construction Board of Appeals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that, is this for the general public member, general contractor, or architect or engineer? Because we do have to specify those in the motions.
Looking back at this paperwork, I don't know what they are or aren't. Um, pardon?
John Gordon is a realtor.
Is the realtor.
He's a real estate agent.
Oh, well then, that would be a, be a non...
He would be the non-constru, contractor.
Yeah.
Okay. So we got that in the, what, three second?
Second.
Okay. I have a vote on this for John.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes for John Gordon to be appointed to the Construction Board of Appeals as a non-general contractor for a term to expire on October 31st, 2027.
Second one for the Construction Board of Appeals.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate Dave Hanche for reappointment to the Construction Board of Appeals.
Second.
For her. Motioned and seconded. Roll call, please.
And I just need to clarify that this is for a general public member?
Whatever he's sitting in.
Okay.
Whatever he's sitting in.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for Dave Hanche to be reappointed to the Construction Board of Appeals as a general public men, member, as the layperson for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, and then the last position there for Construction Board?
I don't have a general contractor. I, is, is not Esther, it wasn't, did her or her husband own a business?
Yeah, 36 shares. She needs to be appointed.
Esther McGrath.
Your Honor? I move that Esther McGrath be appointed to the Construction Board of Appeals.
Second.
Under the general contractor.
Under the general. Under, under general contractor.
Now, you're second. Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for Esther McGrath to be appointed to the Construction Board of Appeals as the architect engineer for a term to expire on October 31st, 2026.
Evy, that was general contractor.
Uh, I thought John Gordon was general contractor. No.
The motion was McGrath, I believe, for general contractor.
Correct. The other one was for...
Gordon was the non-general contractor.
That's what I have, is Gordon was the non-general contractor.
Correct.
And the one we have left is architect engineer.
So we were talking about when we reappointed the sitting, the incumbent. As far as we know, the guy's, was he a general contractor?
Dave Hanche, that's all. I mean, he's, I don't know if he's a general contractor, he's, that's a lot of...
Was he sitting on there, was, what position is he filling there now? Is it the general, the public, or is it contractor and engineer?
He is a resident general public member.
So the one for like an architect, it has to be an architect?
Um, it does, but they do have a quorum if you don't want to fill that architect engineer.
No, but I'm saying if we wanted to fill it, it would have to be with an architect.
That is correct.
You can't fill it with somebody who's just from the general public in the architect, you know.
You are correct. The code states that it has to be an architect engineer.
So then where does this leave us with, um, the first nominee?
Yeah.
Because I think...
Esther, John.
Well, I think Esther, they own a business, right?
Right.
So they could be a, they could fall under the general contracting, but the first gentleman that we appointed was going under the general public member.
Right.
But the incumbent is the general public member.
And so the vacant position is a non-general contractor. I know on the motion it says general contractor, but it's for a non-general contractor, right?
Correct.
That's the one you appointed John Gordon to already, which fits.
A non-general contractor. That's the general public member, correct?
Correct.
So...
Dave Hanche is the general public member.
Yes.
Well, where would it say here a non-general contractor then, in these motions?
As Debbie stated in the beginning, the motion was written incorrectly, and it should have written, read, "non-general contractor."
Gotcha. Maybe I should start paying attention to Evy.
Yeah.
Bambi?
Do we have to fill the architect engineer when I don't think anybody had that on their application, that they had the qualifications?
That's correct, and, and it has a quorum, and they, we do not have to appoint that.
Right. You still have a quorum. So you can move on.
So, do we need to remove one?
Do we need to remove one, because we just voted on three?
But she wasn't qualified for that position, so Joel can.
What's the status of the motion, was there a second?
It was seconded.
Yeah, you can withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I withdraw the motion.
Oh, sorry, Darryl. I thought I brought it up.
And we're withdrawing, we're withdrawing McGrath, right?
Yes. She withdraws her second. Okay. So one open. All right, Health and Human Services. We have three positions expiring. Do I have a motion for, first person for the Health and Human Services?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Alicia, and I don't know how to say the last name, K-R-C-I-L-E-K, be appointed to the Health and Human Services Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for Alicia Crisselak to be appointed to the Health and Human Services Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, second position.
Your Honor? I nominate Jeffrey Danford to, as an incumbent, to be reappointed to Health and Human Services.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
No.
Councilmember Heck?
No.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two for Jeffrey Danford to be reappointed to the Health and Human Services Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, and then the last one.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate Juan Montgomery to serve on the Health and Human Services Committee for a term to expire October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to appoint Dawn Montgomery to the Health and Human Services Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, we have two vacancies for IDA.
Does anybody want to serve on the IDA? Raise your hand.
Hang on. It's called the Industrial Development Authority.
Catherine, you're already serving, otherwise I nominate you for it.
Be advised that the last time they held a meeting was, what, 1989?
That's about, that sounds about right.
And just to clarify, this is a panel of seven members, they currently have four, so they do have a quorum, we're just trying to fill vacancies that have been on there for the last two terms. So this does not have to, you don't have to do anything on this one tonight if you don't want to.
Unless anybody wants to volunteer for it.
That's what I said, raise your hands.
Okay.
Once, twice, done.
All right, move on to the library. Three expiring terms for library, that's a three-year term. Do I have a motion for the first one?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I want to reappoint Judy Borri, incumbent, to the Library Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
My apologies, Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to reappoint Judy Borri to the Library Board for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
All right, the second position.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate Robin Barker to be reappointed to the Library Board for a term to expire October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to reappoint.
Robin Barker.
Robin Barker, thank you, to the Library Board for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, now the last position.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Alexandra Wyroba be appointed to the Library Board for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Moved and double seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to appoint Alex, Alexandra Wyroby to the Library Board for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, the MPC, that's one we just did.
Yeah, we did away with it.
That is correct.
Okay, so that's gone. So Parks and Recreation, we have two expiring terms and one vacancy. So, do we want to work on the vacancy first? Just filling a position for, what, one year?
It's two years, October of 2027 it expires.
Okay, so for two years, for the vacancy.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Vega Manny be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire October 31st, 2027.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to appoint Vega Manny to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2027.
Okay, now the first of the long terms.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate Heather Muller to be reappointed to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term to expire October 31st of 2027.
Second.
Clarification that this is for 2028?
Oh, 28, sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to reappoint Heather Muller to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire October 31st, 2028.
Okay, and then the last position.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to nominate Lamont Klepler.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
My apologies, there's a lot to write. Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to appoint Lamont Klepler to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire October 31st, 2028.
Your Honor, can I just make a quick clarification? So that, the first gentleman that was appointed, we were saying Vega Manny, it's Manny, his first name's Manny, right, last name Vega?
Oh, my apologies.
I want to make sure we're not doing, we're not calling him Vega Manny.
No, my apologies.
It's Manny Vega.
I don't have my list here in front of me, I'm sorry.
It's Manny Vega, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Manny.
P and Z.
Your Honor?
We have one vacancy and then two expiring terms, so I'll do the vacancy first.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ben.
I move that Nicholas Kelly be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to appoint Nicholas Kelly to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2026.
Your Honor?
Your.
Yes, we'll go on to the next one, okay, go ahead.
I move that Dave Hanche be reelected to Planning and Zoning for a term expiring October 31st, 2028.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to reappoint Dave Hanche to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Your Honor?
Yes, last one, yes.
I move that Robin Barker be reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire October 31st, 2028. Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Councilmember Heck, thank you. Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to reappoint Robin Barker to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, for the last one, Public Art.
Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I nominate for reappointment Jeffrey Danford to Public Art.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, roll call.
I missed the second, my apologies, okay, thank you. Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Only because I had someone else in mind, no offense, Jeff, no.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
I want him to live, so yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one to reappoint Jeffrey Danford to the Public Arts Commission for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Okay, for the second one.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Janet Cooper be appointed to the Public Arts Commission as Interested in Art for a term to expire on October 31st, 2028.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Heck?
No, only because I had somebody else that I would have opted for in that, so no.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Again, I had someone, so no.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor Wilson?
Well, yes, this is not going to do any good to say no.
Motion passes five to two for Janet Cooper to be appointed to the Public Arts Commission as Interested in Art for a term to expire October 31st, 2028.
Well, I want to say thank you all for putting in for it, and we'll.
See you next year, next year.
That's right, do it next year again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your Honor, can I say one thing to all these lovely people who applied? If we didn't appoint you, it's, don't take it personally. Twenty-six people applied for about nineteen positions, so if you didn't get selected, please do a, keep reapplying, you know, don't, don't give up on us, thank you.
Plus, if I may, there's other opportunities through our, throughout our city to volunteer. There's always, you know, ways to volunteer at Parks and Rec, there's ways to volunteer with the CDC, there's ways to volunteer, just you name it, so, you know, be a part of our community and apply again for a commission, catch you on the next one.
Police department's always looking for volunteers too.
Okay, now it's time for our public hearing, our public hearing, excuse me, our public comment.
Call to the public.
Call to the public, okay. I think it's the end of the day. I'd like to remind everyone, the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law, it's a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Underneath the open meeting law, council cannot engage in a discussion on the issue presented, but may respond to criticism, may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place this matter on a future agenda for discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And I'm going to start out with Gail Evans.
Howdy. I forgot my glasses tonight, so this might be interesting. I don't think it would help at this point, thank you though. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, friends, Gail Evans, currently looking for another house in Apache Junction, haven't found one yet.
There's a ton of them down South, Gail.
I know, but I have four cars, it's, it's a personal problem. Anyways, I'd like to report tonight on our September 27th road cleanup that we did along Baseline Road. This was our first weekend of the beginning of our late monsoon season. I don't know if you recall the first rain, it kind of hit us kind of heavy at night, and I thought, oh my God, nobody's going to show up to pick up trash along a road after this rainstorm. We had thirty volunteers show up. It was amazing, because I'm not sure I would have showed up if, knowing that it looked like it was going to rain again, and by God, it did, and nobody left. They just kept picking trash up all through the rain. I, I was so impressed with the people and the volunteers that we have here in Apache Junction, it was just amazing. Like I said, we had thirty volunteers, one young woman, and I believe her name was Ashley, actually rode her bicycle from Tomahawk and Baseline all the way down to Ironwood just to pick up trash. I mean, that's pretty incredible as far as the youth today, it really says a lot, there's some really good ones out there. We started at seven, we were done by 9:30. I'd like to thank Public Works for their help, they supplied us with the vests, trash bags, anything that we needed. And all in all, it cost us $12 to dump what we picked up, and that's so cheap. I really encourage any group of volunteers, pick, pick a road, we, we could use it everywhere. I'd like to report Make a Difference Day is now going to happen January 17th, 2026, our typical cleanups, we're looking for new projects to do. If you know of someone struggling to keep their property up to code regulations, please let us know. Thank you. That's obnoxious. And I can say that now.
Rich.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff, Rich Fidella, Pinell County Supervisor, I'm just here tonight to let you know that, as you know, over the last several years, the state has gone after cities and towns, planning and zoning. The state thinks they know better than the local cities. I beg to differ as a former vice mayor of the city of Maricopa, that they know better about my backyard or your backyard. So I just want to let you know, um, that all five of us, Pinellas County Supervisors, have your back and will be there. Uh, all 15 counties will have your back about this to make sure that we keep the cities out of our backyard. The state doesn't want the federal government in their backyard. I don't want them in your backyard. The other thing is that they're going to come after counties after that. And guess what? They don't know what they're doing in the state, so I don't want them in your backyard and I don't want them in my backyard. So I promise you, uh, that I will continue to do this throughout the whole entire, all of Pinellas County. I've got four more stops to do this. It is a little early, but I just want to get it on record now to let you know that all five of us, Pinellas County Supervisors, have your back. And, uh, when this comes up again, because it seems to come up every year, uh, we'll make sure we squash it, so, thank you. And if there's anything you ever want to know, you guys know my office number, please feel free. I know I'm not in your district, but I'm here to help Pinellas County, not just my district. Thank you, God bless, and have a good night.
Thank you. Donna Carr.
Donna Carr, Petra Junction resident. First, I guess I need to say that the paper I did up last time I was here, yeah, I screwed up again. I don't know why I keep on wanting to say that the solar company wants to put it on federal land, no, it's state land. So I had to correct myself again. And I guess, uh, there's something that confuses me, and that is the fact that our last mayor, he was on the board for the Gateway Airport. Current mayor is on the board for the Gateway Airport. Money was given to the Gateway Airport, which was Apache Junction, people paying taxes given to the Gateway Airport. Also, money was given to Mesa to help them finish the 24 to push it on, uh, out to Apache Junction area. And I don't think our tax dollars should be paying for other towns or the Gateway Airport. And when I saw the pictures up there of breaking ground, I'm just wondering how much of our tax dollars went towards that breaking ground. So, that, and I am for, if you can send somebody to this lady over here who needs help with their yard, that would be truly appreciated. Thanks.
Mo.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. Mo, 2304 North Cortez Road, Apache Junction, Arizona. Council and cities aware of it, and Highway 88, right before the hitching post, this, uh, mound of dirt piled up over there in that locations. And I know the city working on to recreate the code. Today, this incident almost happened, this, uh, dump truck came out, loaded up with, uh, dirt, and almost clipped my car. And, uh, I came to the city, talked to the court of compliance, they told me, gave me update on it. And I went in that location, there's a phone number over there, and I called that phone number and I asked him, do you guys have a fountain over there? Oh, we sold it. I said, okay. I asked him, does, if I need to clean dirt, you guys selling it? Yes. First of all, that gentleman is operating business, is a residential property, it's not a commercial. Second thing is, they do not have a business license. And he said himself that, say, he's a sovereign citizen, but why he's on our road, this is what we build it, our tax dollars. And he's using all that stuff and then he's trying to get out of this mess. And I know city working on it, council working on it, ADQ working on it, and I'm requesting if we can speed up that paperwork or work where I would need to be done before it's become the most safety hazard. Thank you very much. You guys look into it, we greatly appreciate it.
Andre.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here for a request. This past couple of weeks, we had our, finally, we got some rain, and with the rain comes our biggest AJ product, and that's sand. And it's like everywhere.